I will move forward the resolution that staff prepared tonight as written for SUP PLN 2014-00313.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Canlin, is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Noe. No, sorry, Ms. Anderson.
I'd just like to say a couple of words. For the Okaquan district, I represent the Okaquan district, and I will tell you that we squabble over everything in the Okaquan district, from the location of a cell tower to cutting down a tree, to the color of bricks on a building. And we might have many meetings over seemingly insignificant things. So this is nothing new to be concerned about something as big as this. For those of you that want to worship in a mosque, I seriously want you to find a good place. I want you to have a place of worship in an area where you would like to worship. I am offended, though, tonight, that my vote, whichever way it is, could be perceived as whether I like a mosque or I don't like a mosque. It has nothing to do with that whatsoever. My vote has to do with land use issues and the ordinances that we have here in Prince William County. There were a lot of assumptions made when this land was purchased, and I don't know who did all the counseling, but we shouldn't be here tonight. We honestly should not have been through all of this tonight because better work should have been done when they were selecting land for this facility. I do have major concerns. Traffic congestion is horrendous in the Okaquan district, so I can only imagine what the thoughts are of the people that live in this particular area. And I don't know why the land wasn't tested. That's a question I've had all night. Why don't we know what the situation is with that land and why it couldn't? We don't know whether it's appropriate for septic or not. So I'm going to go ahead and I will be voting yes for this resolution as it is here tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prinsby and then Mr. Noe.
Thank you. Well, you know it's a good day in our community when nearly 1,000 people can come together here at McCourt and share their views about the proposed mosque under the First Amendment right of free speech. All of you were very articulate and very passionate about the issues. And one thing that stood out to me overwhelmingly is that we are talking past each other rather than to each other. Something happened in October of last year, about eight or nine months ago, when the community meetings stopped. They stopped. Why do I think that the dialogue was good? Because we heard the applicant say earlier, or last night, that they resubmitted five times because there was so much community feedback. Feedback was coming forward. The mosque leadership was listening. But something happened. I don't know what happened in October when the meetings stopped. So I think going forward, no matter how my colleagues and I vote on this tonight, going forward, I think we owe it to all of us to reinitiate that dialogue. If the mosque is approved tonight, with or without sewer, there's still steps in the process after we vote tonight where there's some decisions that still have to be made. Decisions still have to be made on the site plan, on the building permit, on the architectural features, even on sidewalk and streetlights. Pedestrian safety is what I heard from some of you as well. So no matter how we vote, I think that it's just a shame that we stopped talking to each other and we started talking past each other. I'm going to vote no on Supervisor Lawson's motion, the staff resolution, because I'm going to vote in favor of the mosque and in favor of public access to sewer. And hope, really hope, that the right leadership is going to step forward and make this dialogue work, and we're going to work through the remainder of these issues together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Noe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the comments that everyone's made, certainly on this board, but really the 150 or so people who got up and spoke at this podium tonight. I was getting some texts during this, people saying, "Why don't you just cut them off? You've heard everything." People in this room, actually, were texting me saying, "Why don't you just tell people that we've heard everything we need to hear and we can move on?" And my response to that is no, that we need to hear from everyone in this because this is how a democracy works, is that the people have a chance to make their peace and say their peace before the elected body makes the final decision. And I'm really grateful for the fact that we had so much comment on this. I also recognize this is something where intelligent and reasonable people can disagree on some fine details of this. We've heard a lot tonight about the notion that some of the other religious institutions that have gotten sewer approval in different ways in the rural area are different than this, and I'll agree. And I look at Fireside Wesleyan Church and I look at Park Valley, different situations, unequivocally. And there were a few others that I can't remember at this hour of the night. But I'll say this, from my perspective, there's one thing that didn't make them different. I voted for all of those, and I didn't vote for them because of that tiny little difference. I voted for those because I believe that while it's important that we have guidelines in our conference of plan and that we have rules, the reason we built into those rules the ability to have this conversation and make exceptions is because sometimes we need to. And I believe that the most fundamental reason for us to have to make a change is because of the constitutional, the God-given and constitutionally protected right to practice freedom of religion. It is embedded in everything we believe in this country. And as much as I am sympathetic to those who would say that a sewer connection is a worm into the, you know, it's going to, a vine that's going to attack other things, that has not been the case in the examples of the other religious institutions we have approved. And I believe that if there's any time that you're going to make an exception, it has to be, it has to be for religious purposes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a substitute motion to Mrs. Lawson's motion to approve this case, but with an amendment to condition 12 to remove the requirement that it connect to septic and allow it to be connected to sewer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Prinsby. Okay, now discussion on the substitute motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll, thank you. I think I'll chime into this. You know, just to Supervisor Noe's point, that the concern, the issue that, well, it doesn't really lead to anything, well, the problem is it does because it's led to tonight. It's led to, we've got a situation where we are having a proposal that is looking to disregard a pretty significant, you know, it's not like, you know, whether you can have outdoor storage in an M1 versus M2. Sewer is a pretty significant component of the Rural Crescent, probably the most significant component of it, the crux of the ability to expand facilities, the crux of the ability to expand neighborhoods. You take out the sewer component of the Rural Crescent and you really don't have the Rural Crescent. Now, you know, I feel honored to serve as the Gainesville Supervisor, but part of that responsibility of serving as the Gainesville Supervisor, and I know Supervisor Lawson has that responsibility also, is we're almost the sentinel standing there on the Rural Crescent because so much of our district is, has the Rural Crescent in there. So we get very sensitive and want to make sure that we're very specific and careful when it comes to the Rural Crescent. For those of you folks who are seeing these proceedings and thinks, "Well, you know, they're picking on us here because they're talking about the Rural Crescent," I invite you to come to a lot more of these meetings because we talk about the Rural Crescent, we talk about sewer, we talk about traffic, we talk about these kind of things all the time. And we have these issues, and frankly, we have other constituent groups who come out here and we have vigorous debate about it. So this isn't an unusual discussion. Someone made the comment several hours ago about consistency. We want to make sure that we have consistency. You know what, one of the reasons that you don't hear about a lot of churches or other facilities getting denied public sewer from the board is because they don't make it this far. Because when churches come in or other facilities come in and we let them know this is not permissible, for example, the extensive conversations I had with the Catherine Drexel Church where they came and talked to me and said, "We would like to put in or get public sewer for our facility," and I said, "I cannot support that. It's something I cannot support." So they, and the community loudly said, "We do not support that." And so the Catherine Drexel Church said, "Okay, we're not going to put that part of our application." So you see the ones where organizations move forward, but you're not seeing the dozens and dozens that never get to this point because they end up saying, "Okay, this is a part of the Rural Crescent." Now, there are exceptions. We definitely understand there are exceptions. One, Victory Crossing was one that this board decided to make an exception, but we felt at the time there was a very good reason. It does concern me that there wasn't any sort of, at least a token effort that I saw to make a case why there should be an exception besides the point that, "Well, you've done it before." Well, we've done it before because very specific exceptions were outlined and brought to the board and said, "This is why we can't have septic." And I didn't hear that. I think it could have been a different situation if there was, we had a soil test done or something that we could hang our hats on that this is something that needs an exception. I am in favor of Supervisor Lawson's original motion to approve it, but abiding by the regulations of the Rural Crescent, the guidelines of the Rural Crescent that many of us have promised to uphold. And so that's why I won't be supporting Supervisor Noe's motion to have public sewer.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, Michael. I, too, am going to support Janine's motion for approval. And I had a lot of concerns about how I was going to get to that position of taking or making a decision, frankly, on either or because there were so many problems that I saw with infrastructure and compliance with the comprehensive plan. We have a law on the books and it's incorporated in the plans of the county government called a comprehensive plan. And in effect, if we go against the comprehensive plan when we are processing various applications for special use permits or rezonings, if we go against the comprehensive plan, we're just violating the law. But on the other hand, if you don't make an exception every now and then in that part of the plan that gives some discretion to the Board of Supervisors, then you're not ever going to get where you need to go anyway. So that's what I'm going to do is my vote will be for her motion, but that's going to be without the sewer because Ms. Cattigan and I, a number of years ago, fought the battle of the comprehensive plan, and I don't think we have to revisit that. I just don't think sewer is appropriate because of the fact that we are violating the comprehensive plan.
So we're discussing the substitute motion made by Mr. Noe, second by Mr. Prinsby. And if this passes, it will become the main motion, so there will be another vote after this. So is there further discussion on the substitute motion?
I do, I haven't said anything all evening. Been listening and been very busy all day, all week. You know, in all of my years on the board, and I've been on many years, I've never voted against a church. And I had always, this evening, planned to vote for the mosque. Felt that that was important, and I have visited the mosque on Spriggs Road and have enjoyed it very much. However, in listening to, and then I understand that Patriot and the two elementary schools have sewer and the two churches have received exceptions, and so now I feel that I want to support Mr. Noe's motion because I want to be fair. If exceptions have been made and we're not going to do it on this mosque, I was always going to vote for the mosque because I think you are people of faith and you want a place to pray, and I understand that. And you've always been very involved in the community. I've seen that firsthand. But I, the sewer I thought about. The Rural Crescent, I will always be there for the Rural Crescent, and I just think I want fairness. Two churches, a high school and two elementary schools have received the sewer, and I want to be fair. So I'm going to vote for Mr. Noe's motion.
Let's vote on the substitute, Mr. Noe's substitute motion, which I'm going to be supporting. Please vote.
The motion fails because it's a tie vote, four to four, but it's Supervisors Cattigan, Noe, Prinsby, and Stewart voting aye. Supervisors Anderson, Canlin, pardon me, I'm writing the same time, Jenkins and Lawson voting nay, so it is a tie vote, so the motion to amend fails. The main motion before you is Supervisor Lawson.
I move forward my motion for approval.
Okay, is there discussion on the main motion? Mr. Noe?
I just want to make one observation. I'm disappointed by the, I'll come with the vote, but it, you know, that's how democracy works. I want to say that it was suggested earlier this evening that the board might vote in favor of sewer because we were afraid of a lawsuit. We did have some discussion of that, and I think the question of the lawsuit is relevant. From my perspective, I did not vote for sewer because I was afraid of a lawsuit. I voted for sewer because I believed it was the right thing to do. I still believe it's the right thing to do in this case, but board has not gone down that path. I'm going to vote in favor of Ms. Lawson's motion because, given where we are, I also believe it's the right thing to do. And because I believe we need to do what we can to move this mosque forward.
Okay, are there any other further substitute motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Prinsby?
I'd move to divide the resolution and consider the two issues separately.
Okay, there's been a motion to, for division. That is, I believe, Ms. Rovell? I think that is permitted under the board's rules, is it not?
I think, and I think it's non-debatable, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, there's been a motion to divide?
Divide the question.
Divide the question.
Yes.
And this would divide the question from, just to be clear, the question of the sewer from the approval of the mosque. We'll be voting on these things separately.
That's correct, and we would start with the mosque.
Mr. Chairman.
This is not debatable. Ms. Lawson?
I just had a question. Isn't this exactly what we just went through?
No, that was a substitute motion. This is a motion to divide the question.
It's different.
Okay, this is a good idea. I think this clarifies, this is a very good idea to divide the question. Let's vote on the motion to divide. A second by Mr. Noe. Please vote on the division of the question.
Mosque.
Whether to divide the question.
Divide it.
Divide the, yes, whether to divide the question.
Mr. Chairman. Chairman, if it's non-debatable, we're not going to vote on whether or not we can divide the question. The vote is on the mosque itself and then the access to sewer. And if I can just get clarification from Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Campbell, do we have to vote on the division of the question?
Only time I don't have my books out.
Okay, go ahead. You figure it out because your answer must be correct. Ms. Rovell? It's probably in Robert's rules.
It is, definitely.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts has no sense of rules. Motion to divide the question is, is an incidental motion. It requires, it does not require a second. It can be amended. It is not debatable, and it needs two-thirds majority vote.
What needs two-thirds majority vote?
To divide the question.
I thought you said we don't vote on it.
No, it's not what I said. I said it does not require a second. It can be amended. It is not debatable, but it requires a two-thirds majority vote. This is the county attorney's handout. Did you want to take it?
I was just going to say, has that provision been adopted into the board's rules of procedure?
Mr. Chairman.
Board's rules of procedure are that we follow the Roberts rules of order.
If it's not there, but the board's rules of procedure?
Do not address.
Okay, I'm going to call recess for 10 minutes. I want the, I want the clerk and the county attorney to figure this out and come back with a definite answer.
10 minutes?
10 minutes.
We're back on the show here. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Thanks for the recess. So why don't we have the county attorney explain what was?
If she were there.
If she's there. We very rarely have to use Roberts rules.
And they're hard when you use them. They're not fun.
But this was confusing. Okay, Ms. Rovell, would you like to explain what is required for dividing the question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To divide the question, the board simply needs a majority vote to divide the question.
Okay, so we have a motion, this is not debatable, correct?
Correct.
Not debatable. There is a motion by Mr. Prinsby to divide the question between the mosque and sewer for the mosque. Is that correct, Mr. Prinsby?
That's correct.
Okay, there's no debate, so please vote on the motion, Mr. Prinsby's motion to divide the question.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the county attorney something?
You may ask the county attorney something.
Okay, I'm not debating. What's the purpose of dividing a question? I'm a little unclear on that if we're?
So you can vote separately on two different parts of the question.
But if everyone's in agreement on the first point of it and we're just in agreement on the disagreement on the second point of it, what's the purpose of dividing a question?
We're getting into a debate here, right?
Roberts rules provides that if a resolution has several prongs to it, that the governing body is entitled to divide them. And vote on them separately.
Okay, please vote. And this is the division of the question.
Motion passes, five in favor, three opposed. Supervisors Cattigan, Jenkins, Noe, Prinsby, and Stewart voting aye. Supervisors Anderson, Canlin, pardon me, and Lawson voting nay, so the motion to divide the question passes.
Okay, now, the first question is on approval of the mosque itself. Is there a motion on the approval? Itself.
So?
Discussion, Ms. Anderson.
I just want to know if this first one passes, what is the second motion exactly?
The second question is whether or not the sewer will be approved with the mosque.
Public access to sewer.
So right now we're voting on the mosque?
Yes.
Call the question.
Okay, please vote.
Vote unanimous to approve the mosque.
Okay. And now, the, now do we have a motion on the approval of the sewer? Discussion? Okay, please vote. Please vote. All right, please vote again.
It's a tie vote, four to four.
Wait, I think, Mr. Jenkins, did you, because I think you voted inconsistent there.
Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to?
That was his first vote.
Okay, we need a motion, for those who voted in favor, we need a vote to reconsider.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
I'm sorry, well, there's been a vote, motion to reconsider. Is there a second on the motion to reconsider? Okay, is there discussion on the motion to reconsider?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
How can we have a motion to reconsider when it was a four-four vote? That means it should have failed.
Anybody who voted in favor can make a motion to reconsider.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the clerk to rule on that. And then I'd also like to know when we're going to get back to my original motion, which was after the?
We divided the question. We divided the motion.
Right. Looks like I'm looking to the county attorney.
I think, let's kind of take a step back here for a second. So what ended up happening is we took Supervisor Lawson's motion, divided it up. We all were supportive of the mosque, so we got that out of the way. And now the question is on public sewer. And I think Supervisor Jenkins has been very consistent that he's not in favor of public sewer going to the Rural Crescent, and I think that's what you saw why we voted no.
There's a motion to reconsider. Is there further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Please vote on the motion to reconsider. Please vote on the motion to reconsider. Please vote, please vote yes on the motion.
Mr. Jenkins, would you care to vote, sir?
Mr. Jenkins? No, please vote on the motion, John. Please vote yes. I'm supporting, I'm supporting the motion, Mr. Jenkins. Okay.
Mr. Jenkins voting aye, the motion passes.
Okay, now we have a motion. Okay, the motion to reconsider has been passed. Now we need another motion.
How about the motion to adjourn?
We got to get done with this, guys. We got to get done. We need a motion, again, this is a motion on the sewer. Okay, is there discussion? I'm going to vote yes on this. Please vote, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear?
Yes, of course.
This is? This is whether to allow public sewer for this situation?
That's correct.
Okay.
The motion passes, five in favor, three opposed. Supervisors Cattigan, Jenkins, Noe, Prinsby, and Stewart. Supervisors Cattigan, Jenkins, Noe, Prinsby, and Stewart voting aye. Supervisors Anderson, Canlin, and Lawson voting nay.
Please clear the board, we need a motion to adjourn, please.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
There's no, a motion to adjourn, there's no motion, there's no discussion of a motion to adjourn. Please vote.
That was bad. That was really bad.
Who seconded the motion to adjourn?
Who seconded the motion?
Miss.
He didn't.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Anderson, Mr. Jenkins, would you care to vote for adjourn?
John, this is a motion to adjourn. John, it's a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Yeah.
The motion passes, seven in favor, one opposed.
All right, we're done.
Supervisor Anderson, Cattigan, Jenkins, Lawson, Noe, Prinsby, Stewart voting aye. Supervisor Canlin voting nay.